Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for joining us for our February council meeting. Please rise with us to pledge our allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Michael Mance, Community Corrections to discuss their annual report and the TRACS program. Good morning, Michael.
I don't think I have to do anything with the TRACS program, so I'm just going to go...
Just a comment or two.
Okay. Yeah, I submitted our annual report for community corrections. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. It's my understanding that we're going to try to be pretty brief this morning. I really just want to make sure that we focus on page 16 at the top, which is the budget summary. Total project income collected for the year is $517,000. After all of our grant funding and county dollars that are applied towards our program, total savings right at $5.4 million as a program. And then at the end of the report, on the bottom of page 18, is some statistics for the year that you might find valuable. There's both probation and community corrections listed there, but you can see total of 2,382 individuals supervised on probation, 227 on home detention, 479 on pre-trial, which is 170 more than we did in 2020, and a total of 5,789 drug screens collected with a total of 708 positive drug screens.
And could you briefly mention about the TRACS?
Yeah, it's a program that the commissioners approved yesterday. It's going to allow us to intercept state tax returns of any community corrections clients who have outstanding fees. We're only going to do it for clients that started the program on or after January 1st of 2020 because that's when we switched over to our current software program. So I'm really confident that anybody that has outstanding fees within that system that started after that date, those are going to be accurate, and we're not going to have to worry about going back to an old software program and trying to pull data out. We have to report to them twice a week for people that are delinquent, and if they're not making payments at the time that they get their tax return, then it can be intercepted.
Is that voluntary, or you're going to do it automatically?
We're going to do it automatically.
Do you know how that works with when they intercept tax returns for child support payments?
Yeah, so it's basically a get-in-line system. So if they already have one for child support, or if another office already has one against them, then we're just in the back of the line. I don't know that, I mean, we'll utilize, we'll see how it goes this first year. It's pretty labor-intensive for our office. And I think we're doing a much better job of collecting fees than we've done in the past. We're doing some new evidence-based stuff, trying to incentivize clients who are paid in full on the program. A good example of that is this year, we let clients who were completely paid in full at Thanksgiving spend two hours at a relative's house, and normally, we wouldn't allow them to be at a private residence, but if they were paid in full, in full compliance with their case plan, had passed all their drug screens, doing all the things that they're expected to do, they were able to go and spend a couple hours with their family. So that kind of stuff motivates them way more than the fear of going to jail or having their tax refund intercepted, so.
Any further comments or questions?
I was here yesterday and heard a little more full report, and I just want to thank you. You do a great job, and man, there's just so much that goes on that people don't understand.
Appreciate that.
Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Really like the organizational chart you put together.
Sean didn't even hear that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep, thank you.
I also just want to mention, Marcia Wilhoe unfortunately is not able to be with us. She has a definite excused absence here today. Okay, Nick Parr with the Highway Department, Bond Fund Discussion and the Highway's Annual Report.
Yeah, so the first item, Nick Parr, Boone County Highway, was the bond fund discussion. Recently found, working with the auditor, that our bonds that were done in 2020 didn't have a stream or a method in order to pay those payments on those bonds, and then was getting paid out of the bond funds, which we were not anticipating. We were planning for all of the bond funds to go toward projects and the payments to come out of the additional levy that was assessed on the taxes. So, the discussion I had with Marcia, which unfortunately, she's not here, we had Marcia, and had Debbie, and had Bob, kind of a conference call type of setting to figure out what we can do to get it cleaned up or rectified, and maybe Debbie can elaborate some more, or Bob can, on exactly what the method is, but the future plan, we're going to have to budget dollars into general fund to make these payments. Somehow, we're going to have to get the funds back into bond funds because we've already got contracts and agreements in place to spend those dollars, so don't know what that method looks like.
We actually did that process yesterday. Bob came over, and Katie and Bob and I discussed how we needed to do this. We were not directed at the time of the bond closing on where these fees were supposed to be paid from, so we took it upon ourselves to pay them out of the bond fund. Unfortunately, that was not the correct way to handle these. They are supposed to come from debt service. So we issued a check from County General Debt Service to repay, which will be received into these bond funds, to repay them back. Then we, at budget time, will set up a line in the Commissioner's Fund to budget for those payments from debt service.
So, yeah, so the debt service payments to the bank for the bond funds, Debbie didn't know better, and she wasn't directed otherwise, so she was taking it out of the bond proceeds themselves. Obviously, as you all remember, there was an increased tax levy due to that, and they should come out of that increased tax rate collection. So, we just decided it'd be best to put it under the Commissioner's line. Melissa already sent me the form to complete, to put a new line in there, so how much was it? It was almost a million dollars over the past year. We've been three payments.
Three payments.
Three payments totaling almost a million dollars.
985-147-91.
There you go. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Nick.
Not like me, Stephanie's the one that did all the work. She told me we were out of money in a bond. I was like, whoa, wait a minute, we've got a problem. $985,000.
Where's the SOP for how this should be done?
It is typically in the closing letter from our financial consultant, Baker Tilly.
Did we not have that?
No, we did. We did. But unfortunately, they didn't know, I mean, it spells it out in there, but it's not super clear because they talk in high-level financial terms. And in the past, when we've done bonds like this, it's typical to take the debt service out of them, which is what they had done previously, for instance, TIF bonds. But this was different because we had an increased tax levy.
And does the SOP state that this should go to the Commissioner's line?
No, it could be, it could be under...
It could be anywhere.
It can be under council, it could be under highway, it doesn't matter. We just thought it would be easier to put it under Commissioners, but it's wherever.
It could be the general fund.
It has to be the general fund.
It's the general fund, yeah.
I just, Madam President, we just need to get with Marcia when she returns on how to make that right, where it should go.
Well, Marcia was on the phone call, so she agreed with us, then, yeah. And the line will be added at the budget.
Yes, we're going to add it now.
Is there additional payments to be made for the rest of this year?
How much is, how much additional to be paid?
So with those payments, where are they going to come?
They will come out of the new line.
Yes. So you're going to do one before budget time?
As I say, you're going to have to do a new line before budget.
July, I think those are July, aren't they?
Yeah, there are two payments, two payments a year, January and July.
So you have to do another, yeah.
Create a line.
You're going to have to do an additional because there was no budget line created last year for this, for the Commissioners, so there's an additional coming out of this.
Well, because at settlement, but at settlement time, we can move that money into debt service.
That's a good point, yeah.
Yeah, at settlement time, it's not going to be an issue moving forward.
How much?
That money comes from property taxes, which in turn comes twice a year to our office during settlement, so June and December. We put that money in the debt service line, which funds the new line.
That's a good point, yeah, so that the next settlement...
So there is no additional.
The next settlement will be before the next payments due.
Yeah. So there's no additional, that money will already be in the line to make the payment.
Further questions?
I guess I got one other question that'd be more for them, maybe, I don't know if we get everybody on the same page, is what does that look like on an annual report, or when we are reporting at the end of the year, or any of that, that shows this check basically that you wrote going back and forth, does that have any impact? So when we do our annual report, the Highway Department, we have to track where everything went and came from, and all of our expenses and bond payments and things of that nature, so I don't know what that would look like, if there's a way to do an entry, a way to note what that check was for.
We can make sure you have all the paperwork. I mean, yeah, we have it. We have to have the same thing for State Board, so, yeah, I mean, we can't just willy-nilly write a check.
That's wrong, I don't know all that stuff. I just want to make sure there's some way, because we do an annual report.
We have all the notes and, yeah.
And the end-of-year stuff, we just got to make sure that all that's...
Absolutely, we can make sure you have it.
Because next year, I'm sure it'll be, we're already doing, last year, so we're going to show those bond payments coming out of the bond when we didn't anticipate them, and now we're going to have to show this check going back in, which actually will be on next year's annual report from this year, so.
Yep. It happens.
Do we need to do anything today?
It's informational.
Informational, we're just letting you know what has taken place and what we're doing moving forward.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. And Nick, annual report?
Yes, they were going to get it pulled up there, is my understanding?
You got Sean.
Yeah, I gave the same annual report yesterday to the Commissioners, so this will be a review for Dawn. He was, he was here, at least came in after, she missed all the fun times with the, hearing the same thing twice. So our vision at the Highway Department is to help all the users of Boone County's transportation system reach their destination safely. That's our vision, that's what we work for. I know I touched on this yesterday, I've already talked to a few of you about snow removal, that's, that's one of those things, you think it's, you know, we work on throughout the year in road preservation and brush and other things, but when it gets to the snow and the hazardous road conditions, we're trying to get everybody to their destination safely, and as much as we can do traffic restrictions and take it to red, there's still people that have to get to work, and there's still people that have to get to their destination. So, you know, we take that personal, and times like that, we do everything we can possibly do to make sure everybody gets to where they're headed and get back home.
And we just want to take a moment to thank you, to thank the Commissioners, and to thank Sheriff for the work that you did this last week with the snow emergency and getting us in the clear to be traveling safely.
Yeah, I passed along that information to our team this morning. We appreciate the thanks, but that's really what, you know, that's what we do, and it is everybody, being three people short. Five new guys, or six new guys that we have in different trucks, it was, it was a lot, but it, we did better than what it could have been. So they're still getting people to their destination, but also getting our guys back home safe is very important to us, too. 2021 accomplishments, there's a list of the different things that we did, you know, with road treatments, you know, signs replacing, brush removal, herbicide application, those bottom three right there, the two, the last two years have been the highest work order calls that we get with brush and visibility at intersections, as well as getting signs replaced, has been the highest work orders. I'll get to that in a minute. I like to talk about this picture over to the right, you can see the cracks in the asphalt that's underneath the black asphalt emulsion that's been placed on that road, and that's the purpose of the chip and seals, to seal those cracks, extend the life of that asphalt, keep the water out. Certifications and licenses, so we add additional, members get category six herbicide application licenses from the Office of the State Chemist, so they can apply herbicides in it right away. That extends the time that we have between times we have to cut the brush back. So that's been a good program that we got started a few years ago, and we continue to get more members to get that certification, so we can get more of that done and expand that program. Keeping it from growing is a lot better than cutting it and trying to drag it through the side ditch, chip it up and get rid of the mulch, so it's, it's a lot more effective. We got a certified traffic control technician and supervisor, we sent him to training through American Transportation Safety Association to get that certification, and we got two additional employees receive CDL licenses, total been 16 now that we've trained by our staff, we've done it all in-house, we've moved three people up to a Class A CDL so they'd be able to drive a combination vehicle. This is the way we've gone about hiring, we've changed several years ago, to get good people and then get them a class, or get a CDL license to be able to drive our trucks. There's new rules taking effect, the 7th, so yesterday technically, with Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration that regulates those CDL, and that's nationwide, that's not just in Indiana, I'll get into those in a little bit. Contracted work, 2021, I came in here and talked about it, I think every time we got one of those structures done, but here's some photos, we got all those small structure replacements, and those three bridge replacements that we wouldn't have been able to fund without community crossings and without bond funds to match. So those were, those 10 projects right there were all done with bond funds and a combination of community crossing funds, and then we had one federal aid bridge project, Bridge 154 get completed in 2021 also. Structure projects completed, so those ones I just had on the other slide, there's kind of a map of where they are throughout the county. I talk about structure numbers and bridges, and I just get used to where they are, and, you know, it's a little better to show them where they're at on the map, they're scattered throughout, throughout the county. Permitting through our office, still consistently see those numbers staying pretty, pretty, pretty high as far as, you know, dust control right-of-way permits, those are all permits that are getting administered through our office, all the right-of-way permits, we actually have to visit every one of those sites. That's a, that's a sign of a lot of work happening in Boone County, whether that's utilities of any type being installed, or work of any type being done in the right-of-way that we're managing in our department. So 2021, I would say was very good, probably excellent in some areas, probably good in some other areas, but overall, we had a very good year. Paved road conditions, so we do a Pazer analysis on our road, asset inventory every year. In the springtime, roads that are a 1 would have been a failed, a 10 would be a new road, and you can see how our averages, our numbers continue to increase over the last several years until 2021, we finally had a reduction. In the, in the overall average, that was due to the road program, in 2020 was actually reduced, we anticipated a revenue shortfall because of COVID shutdowns. You can see how immediate that makes a change in those Pazer ratings, just from the road preservation treatments. Gravel roads are rated 1 through 5, they're, they're a different scale, much different treatments, they can change much differently throughout the year, but they can also be improved much quicker, too. So you can see the average increases, it's been substantial, we only started doing the Pazer on the gravel roads in 2019. We continue to work on the items that make those Pazer ratings lower, so working on the cutting the berm, we did that a lot when we reduced our road program, and you can see how that drainage, doing that drainage work on gravel roads has continued to improve the condition of those gravel roads. So we put, we placed a lot of material, 27,000 tons of material, that's a lot to haul in and a lot to haul back out, but that's our staff and, you know, our five greater operators working on, working on our 320 miles of gravel road. 2021 work orders, so this is just all order, work that is called into our department, whether it was our own staff finding it, or our constituents calling it in, anybody who's on our roads using, using a road season issue, you can see the, the big, big piece of the pie, the two biggest pieces of the pie, brush and mowing at 18% of those calls and signs at 41%. Still getting signs, a lot of, a lot of calls and a lot of concerns with those, and those are things that we continue to work on. We replaced 441 signs last year, we barely made a dent in the, the percentage of the calls on sign complaints. So it's, it's a big reason we're going after these HSIP dollars, the Highway Safety Improvement Funds, for a 90-10 project to replace countywide, our regulatory and warning signs throughout the county. So our trends in the work orders, you can see the overall totals throughout the last five years was, has reduced. We actually expected to see a little bit of an uptick in '21 from '20 due to the COVID shutdowns and the reduction of traffic, but as you can see, we still had a reduction in overall work orders last year. So the trends over the last five years for work orders, six years of work orders, since we started tracking them in 2016, the work, the sign and brush work orders continue to remain fairly consistent, but, you know, the, the sign work orders dropped a little bit, but not very much in, in relationship to the amount of work order reduction that we had. Similar to the brush work orders, had an uptick in '20, we would, we continue to work on those, but that is a significant issue that, that, as we cut trees, those continue to grow back. So the herbicide application, we expect to see the, the benefit of that, it takes a few years as we get around, we started as kind of a pilot program a few years back, and as we continue to use that and expand that program, we expect to see a reduction in those due to the amount that those, some of that brush can grow back, you know, four and five feet a year, and when we're only cutting four or five feet off, off the edge of the road, it continues to make the same work order. So with the herbicide application, we can stunt the growth or reduce the amount that it grows back annually. But the, you know, one of the really good things we've seen is the reduction in drainage work orders, you know, we saw it as, as one of the higher amounts of work orders in 2019, and it was consistently something that we had to focus on, county's very flat, drainage is very important to work on, we've worked with a lot of the agricultural folks to facilitate that, we're the, we're the strip down the middle, you know, they got fields on both sides, we, we're just a piece in the middle trying to get an outlet for this water to get away. We've been very successful in reducing the amount of high-water areas and, and big floods due to the focus on, on the drainage issues and concerns and getting those taken care of. Safety in 2021, you can see the crash number, the overall total crashes has increased, so we expected to see that, it was a steep drop in 2020 due to the reduction of traffic. We, we, we assume, we don't really know the exact causes of everything, but there's a few items on there that we want to, you know, point out, that we continue to have a large percentage of our crashes on dark roadway, and we think that there's a lot there with, with striping on roads, and as well as signing on roads, getting the reflectivity on these signs, getting where you can see that there's road hazards, or curves, or changes in the geometric design of roadways. If we can increase that and bring attention to those, we could likely reduce dark roadway crashes, there is back to those signs, and, and striping would be a benefit to that as well. There's going to be, you know, there's going to be a percentage of crashes on all of these different categories, regardless of what we do, we want to find a way to reduce as much as we can possibly reduce.
Hey Nick, real quick, who tracks, who tracks that? Who gives you that?
So Aries, so when the Sheriff's Department or anybody, there's a crash anywhere in the county, it's logged at a location. As a county, as a county agency, we're able to pull that data, so annually, we pull it down, we can look at it more frequently, but typically, for this report, we pull it annually and look at a total, we exclude anything that's on state or federal highways, or in cities or towns, so it's all tracked throughout the entire county, and there's different categories, is my understanding, when they fill out a crash report, and we just take the ones that are on our road network. 2022 summer road programs, what we anticipate this year, the single chip and seal, 17 miles, about 13, almost 14 miles of double chip and seal, and we're planning to convert seven and a half miles of road, that's all with bond funds, those are roads that were listed in bonds, we'll get to a little more detail on that, I like to talk about this photo here of, of cracks in asphalt frequently we get, why are you working on that road? It's in good condition, you need to pave my road, don't waste your money working on that road over there, it's just got some cracks, or it just looks fine when I drove on it, there's no potholes. So the chip and seal is the most cost-effective treatment we can do. Crack fill we typically do first, it's a lot less expensive, but chip and seal covers the entire road surface when you do it, and you see those cracks in that boxed-in area. We want to get on that and seal that with oil and put chip, and put rocks on top of it before it continues to degrade. This road's probably a 5 on the Pazer scale, we don't want to work till it, work on, wait until we're on it, until it's on a 2. Then it needs a complete overlay, possibly structural work, we want to keep that water out of that base of that road. So frequently, we get questions about that of, you know, you turned my road to gravel, and there was nothing wrong with my road before, these are things that we, we frequently discuss, and we talk about why it's important to do preservation before we have major failures, and that's why we do it, instead of just arbitrarily convert more roads that we will then have to go and do these road preservation treatments.
How long does it typically, so giving that example, hypothetical, if it was on a 5, and you do a chip and seal, where would they get that on the Pazer scale?
That'll probably take it to an 8 on a chip, on a, typically, a chip and seal could go to an 8 or a 9, just depending on the different distresses and what the surface was before we put that on.
And you would have to do that again when?
Typically, a chip and seal can last, this is kind of a average of seven years, depends on the amount of traffic on it. So what happens is the aggregate that's on top of that road, you wouldn't think would get ground off by rubber tires, but that's exactly what happens. Limestone does grind away, and eventually it becomes gone, it'll get black, can get real slick. Benefits of a black road, it actually melts better in the wintertime, but the negative effects are, it can get slick in the rain. So, you know, if we don't do those treatments, then the cost continues to increase substantially as the, as the treatments, as the road deteriorates, the treatments get a lot more expensive.
Is the snow plow raised an eighth of an inch on a gravel road as opposed to laying right on a solid?
Yeah, so on a gravel road, we actually don't, we have a shoe, a steel shoe that sits on the bottom of a plow and actually lifts it up more than an eighth of an inch. We're, we're talking a couple of inches off of a gravel road, maybe three or four inches, depending on how much loose gravel or the condition of the road underneath it. So if we have soft road conditions, really heavy plow sitting on it, it'll sink into that and actually plow all the material off the road. The plows that run on the blacktop roads or chip seal roads, they have a shoe on the bottom of them, but they are just, you know, just supporting a little bit of the weight, so that whole plow isn't sitting on the edge that's sitting down, it'll actually grind material off the road. It grinds the edge off the plow, too. So, yeah, there, there's different, different plows for different type of road, road surfaces.
Thank you.
Planned contracted work in 2022, plan to do approximately 30 miles of crack fill, those won't be determined which specific roads until after we do the Pazer ratings in the spring. Micro-surfacing is a very cost-effective road treatment, may last as long as a chip and seal, it doesn't have the same wear-in characteristics where it causes the, the bleeder road, if you will, with slow-moving, heavy traffic, but, you know, it goes down black and it looks real nice, it's just a thin liquid layer on top of an existing roadway. And then when we get to the resurfacing, approximately 10 miles of road, we're getting to some of these roads that we've been able to do the inch and a half overlay on a lot of our roads, some of our roads now we're getting to doing a heavy wedge or leveling them up, putting intermediate down. So as the, the miles may be dropping a little bit on hot-mix resurfacing, but the treatment is going a more substantial amount of asphalt that has to be placed. Planning for Bridge 41, to get let for construction, that bridge is 200 east at the Clinton County Line, Stone Bridge, as some may know it, it is scheduled for letting right now in October. Mentioned this yesterday, want to mention it again today because Dawn was in the room, but currently talking to NDOT, there's federal legislation that came out that indicated that, you know, some bridges could get replaced, I think you'd asked me about it when this, when this originally happened, we've been staying in touch with NDOT to try to figure out how they were going to go about that, because NDOT administers all the federal highway dollars in Indiana. So we, we talked to them last week, and it was like, you know, what's that going to take, or what's that look like? The only way they're going about it, because of the very tight window they have to be able to use those funds, some of it's this fiscal year, like now and next fiscal year, they're identifying bridges that are local, on a local road, so they can't be on an arterial or a collector road, and they have to be in poor condition, and they have to let this year, this calendar year. Bridge 41 meets those qualifications, so does about eight or nine other bridges. So we're going to work with NDOT, maybe we can adjust our letting date and possibly get that bridge completely paid for with those federal dollars instead of an 80/20 match. She wants it to already be a programmed bridge, the folks at NDOT that I've talked to, the program managers, and they indicate that this bridge could qualify, so I'm going to work with them to see if we can get that 100% paid for with federal dollars from the recent infrastructure bill. So of course, that generated more thoughts in my mind of, okay, what's that look like next year? What do we have in the pipeline next year? Bridge 192 is a federal aid project, but it's not on an off-system road, so it doesn't qualify for the federal dollars. But I, I'm going to try and figure out a way to get bridges that we've already been working on community crossing style, so we're building all the, all the preliminary engineering ourselves, can we turn those into a federal aid project and possibly get those to qualify for 100% match with federal dollars? Going to work on that, you know, I keep signing myself up for, hey, what can we do to get more money to Boone County, but, you know, definitely keeps adding more work that we have to get done in our office, so, but that could be to the tune of, that bridge right there could be, we could be matching $500,000 ourselves on $2 million for, for construction, plus, you know, significant amount of construction inspection, because it's full-time inspection, and if we don't have to take that out of local funds, you know, we can do more structures and more bridges and more small, small structures that we need to get taken care of. So it could really inject some life into getting some of these bridges that are way behind on getting done. Small structure replacements, planning for two of those this, this year, I know that's, this is a little off-topic, but I forgot to mention it a little bit ago, I got a question on my budget, there's, for small structure in Coon Bridge, we originally budgeted $250,000, which would... pay for one of these small structure replacements. And when I got the final, it says $25,000. So I haven't really got to hammer that out yet. So I don't know if we just lost a zero or if we're going to have to do some kind of additional on Coon Bridge to do the small structure replacement this year.
And on that note, we talked to Susan at Baker Tilly. So I'm hoping somebody on the council remembers this. It happened the last day, which would have been the day I left to go to my father's funeral. It was discussed and it was reduced from 250 to 25,000. I was not here. It's not in the minutes and it's not on the record. So I'm hoping somebody remembers.
At Baker Tilly, I have the same.
Yeah, but Baker Tilly and Melissa's notes were exactly the same. And Susan said it happened on that last day before the end of the council workshop.
I'll take a look at the cash balance to see where it looks like we are after we've, some of these changes are not probably going to impact Coon Bridge negatively. If we can get Bridge 41 to move, if we can get some other things, then we would be able to, to put that back to $250,000 and then we'd be able to do the small structure that we're anticipating. So Bridge 150 and 217, the 217 is it going to get replaced this year, hopefully starting in April? That's Willow, it's on a Templin Road between Willow Road and 421. It's a, it's already been awarded community crossing dollars. Bridge 150 is on County Road 700 West, south of 325 South. And we've submitted it for community crossings in this first call this year, anticipating construction of both of those in this calendar year. So the structure projects in 2022, you can see there, you know, where they're scattered out throughout the county. Those are the blue dots on there that, that were on that list of projects that we're planning in 22. So the, the bond structure projects, this is a slide from last year. I just wanted to highlight there that we've, we've done all of the bridges and small structures that are on there. We've already bid 217, it's just not been completed yet. So anticipating the, the actual spring now, spring and summertime of this closure could be 120 day closure on Templin Road. And we're anticipating that to be sometime in April if we get all the utilities relocated. So that will then complete all the structures that were in the bonds from 2020. So the upcoming structure projects, these are additional projects that are in the, are in some state of design or development right now that are outside of the bond funded projects and any projects that we currently have federal aid. So there's a few more projects in the pipeline. I know I'm talking about this with commissioners frequently, but it, it takes a year possibly to get a project, you know, ready to submit for funding and then, you know, could take another eight or 10 months to get the project bid from there and then get constructed. So it can, it can take a lengthy amount of time. So these projects, we continue to fund, design and write away to get them ready for community crossings or in an event like this where we possibly could get federal dollars, we could move, you know, we might be able to move Bridge 84 into that. We might be able to move another bridge, 148 that we've already, already got in development to federal aid instead of using community crossings because if we have to match 50/50 in community crossings, we maybe have to match nothing with some of this federal aid. So those are things we're going to be looking at any option we can to maximize the number of structures that we get completed with the, the funds that we currently have. Bridge 61 is also on there. It's on 1,000 east, north of State Road 32. That's what submitted for federal aid in this last call for projects was that Bridge 61. So 2020, these were the weight rated structures. You can see the dots all over on the map there, how we had the, the 42 weight rated structures throughout the entire county. And after all the upcoming projects and the current projects, you can see the reduction in the number of blue dots. So the, the remaining weight rated structures after the projects we currently have in some stage of development gets us down to 20, 24. So significant reduction in weight rated structures. And that's only one category that we're, we're looking at. You know, we're going to talk about width restricted. We're not talking about some of the other condition ratings. But the weight rating is always a challenge because of the number of heavy loads and the number of, you know, you get down to school buses when it gets low enough that, that can be restricted by our weight rated structures. So, so road conversion projects, since we're about to wrap up on all the bond structure projects, now we've been looking at the conversion projects. We, by the bid of 217, it looks like we have enough funding to do all of these conversions. And we're anticipating to do all these conversions. We're working through everything with the applicants currently on the seven and a half miles of road that we anticipate converting this year. All of these roads were listed in the bonds as possible conversion roads if, if funds were, were remaining. There's seven and a half miles there. And we already did 1100 east last year with budgeted dollars. It was a road we were supposed to do in 2020 and then we cut the budget and didn't end up cutting that, didn't end up converting the road. So we're currently working through everything with the applicants on those roads for, for, for the conversion projects. So here's a map of everybody that's of the, of all the roads that have been submitted into our conversion program. The blue roads, it kind of looks purple on here a little bit are the, the roads you can see will be converted this year with the bond funds. The green roads that are listed on there are roads that have been converted previously using this program. And the red roads are roads that people have submitted and have requested the road to be converted, but haven't scored as high or high enough to get the funding to, to do those conversions. So new for 22, talked about it a little bit with the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, CDL requirements. They actually put this, it was supposed to go in place in 2020 and they delayed it to February of 22. No longer are we able to do our training. Were we going to be able to do our training ourselves and then just take them to a testing facility, pay $150 and get somebody to get a CDL? They were going to force everyone to go to a site certification system where we were going to have to send people to a truck driving school, basically pay for that to them, have them be our employee with a CDL. Staff members at our department worked hard to figure out a way. LTAP was a big part of it. NDOT, all the, the public agencies reached out and was like, we got to find a way to be able to keep people because we need CDLs as well. So they, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration allowed, created a way where we could get a certified site to train and test our own drivers. They have to meet certain qualifications to do all the testing. In the past, we'd all just done driving, obstacle course, show them all that. Now we have to do PowerPoint, walk them through the entire CDL manual. But it's, the only other option is to find CDL drivers. And right now I think everybody knows how bad a driver shortage there currently is. But we want to be able to train them and keep them. So we're going to have to find a way or continue to find a way to make sure that we get refunded for that service so they don't just grab the CDL and run. We've been doing that already, but clearly the costs are going to increase the amount of effort and time that we're going to spend training individuals to get a CDL. But in order to drive the trucks the size that we do, we're going to need to have a CDL. Some other counties, I know cities and towns are already doing it, they're just getting under 26,000 pounds. Don't need a CDL. It's nice to have that luxury, but in our case, you know, snows like this happen, those smaller trucks won't do the work that the bigger trucks will. The distance, we got to haul materials, you do it with a smaller truck and less material hauling each one.
I know philosophically this may be an issue with how you do something for profit, so to speak, but have you thought about offering that class to others?
Absolutely. We absolutely looked into that and why that's not a good idea. We looked into why it would be a good idea to help out other cities and towns. The school bus garage actually came out and we talked to them because they are, they are dying for drivers. We walked them through the process we went through. In our case, we can only do it for our people. You do increase your liability quite a bit when you start saying, hey, here's a CDL. Now you leave because now they're not under your control and driving your vehicles. But you would also a lot of time. So this is going to take a significant amount of time for one person. So we're already going to run into staffing issues to have somebody have to be tied to this, but it's important that we are able to bring her, bring people in without a CDL and, and then be able to still obtain them and, and keep them around. So we, we looked into it, but the type of site certification that this, if you're going to do that type of, for higher work is a different site certification that we have to do. What we've done is just for the public agency and just for our own people. It would take a little more effort and different trainers and qualifications of those trainers. So also new for 22, Highway Department Safety. We got daily safety job site briefings that we're going to implement to highlight potential risks on the job site. We regularly talk about safety, but frequently we talk about it in a, in an environment where we don't have the safety risks to specifically point out. So we're going to implement that not because of those, not because of the number of incidents that we've had, but you know, it's, it definitely brings it to your attention. We had two highway workers get killed in, in Indiana in 2021. So, you know, those are things that bring it home a little bit. And that picture there says injured worker after being struck by car in Union County. And you see behind it is nothing but cornfields. So it wasn't on a busy road. It wasn't on I-65. It wasn't on a state road. These were people doing what we do, just like what we do. And they were stopped to pick something up alongside of the road, not sure what their traffic control looked like. And, you know, somebody, you know, wrong place, wrong time, but they don't get to go home to their families. So there was another highway worker killed in Noble County, pulling out a truck, just something, you know, the truck was hung up on the side of the road and got pinched in between them. So those are things that we, we want to talk to our guys about, but it's also, you know, we talk about winter time, some of the risks, even in the bright sun shiny day, there's still the same amount of risk that, that our guys encounter.
Nick, where's that bridge located in the lower left there?
That's Bridge, that's Bridge 61. So that's what we've submitted for federal aid funding. That's on 1,000 east, north of State Road 32, over Eagle Creek. We're anticipating the awards in March for federal funding. It'll be an 80/20 match project. Already asked about that, is that going to be part of the federal aid? Can we get some federal aid dollars for that one too? And I think that the bill was only for 23, 24, 25. I don't know if it went all the way to 27. That'll be for $20, $27. So I'm not sure if it'll go that far. If something gets extended, we want to be in the right place at the right time to gobble up some of those dollars again. So we're also looking, the award for the 90/10 project for the sign replacement project coming up in 22 as well. So we're, we're still working toward our mission of eliminating fatal and serious injuries resulting from traffic crashes and making those decisions based on their ability to reach zero deaths on our transportation system. You know, a lot of those projects I just talked about continue to work toward that. Bridges that have the concrete walls that stick up the side, places that we aren't able to install guard rail, things of that nature can reduce not just a crash, but can reduce the injury or, or a fatality. So we continue to work toward those things with all of our, our projects and everything that we do. And I didn't try to run too long, but does anybody have any questions?
This is a great report, Nick. Thank you very much. You've been quite busy implementing all this, all these.
Your conversions, will that be hot mix or will that be cold mix?
Conversions will be with chemically modified asphalt. So it goes down to ambient temperature. We'll be making it at the shop and then, yeah, we put it down at ambient temperature. It's proven to be very flexible. Actually that road, I showed the picture of the cracks in the asphalt. That's how it wears differently than, than hot mix asphalt. So it doesn't get really, really hard and crack at one big long crack or crack across. It's more flexible. So it'll end up, you know, six or eight years down the road, we'll end up getting smaller cracks in it, but we'll be. It works very well on rural roads, on flexible subsurface. So when you do hot mix asphalt, anything that's paved anywhere, that's on any type of project has a whole bunch of soil stabilization than could have as much as a foot of asphalt. And, you know, to do that kind of conversion, we price this out of the game. We would never get anything converted. To the other end of the spectrum, just go chip and seal them. That may get you a couple of years and you're back out doing a lot more work to them again. So we found that happy medium to work really well on our roads.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead. Auditor Crum, could we go ahead and do the report on ARP, FRF funds?
I had a call yesterday at 2 o'clock with the, the feds. Myself and Alyssa are quite friends now. They could not verify that, I work for the county, nor can they verify that Jeff works for the county. Because years ago, whoever set the DUNS number up did not put any type of a contact in there. So we have resubmitted our notarized letter with the current date and she is going to somehow push it through. I'm not asking any questions at this point, just that it gets done. We should know within 48 hours. That was yesterday. So hopefully tomorrow afternoon and we can move forward. The DUNS number still exists. It's still open, but no administrator attached to it. So that's the good thing. So our process is still where it was last night. There's only one other county. There's only one other county that has had this issue and they finally got them approved and submitted last week. So there is hope.
Well, no, this has taken, excuse me, a lot of time and effort on your part to see this through.
A lot of Zoom calls, yes, but it will get done.
Thank you very much. All right. And with that, carrying on from a discussion from last month, thank you Commissioner Santilli for sharing about the next level connections grant and the application that's going forward on our behalf through Charter Communications. Wanted to follow up that discussion. We, as a council, submitted a letter of support for that application process, but wanted to follow that up with a vote on $250,000 from ARP money when it comes in to go toward this project as the county's contribution as far as the match goes. Any further questions or comments on that?
It is contingent though if we get the money.
Certainly is. This is similar to what we did for Thorntown for their stormwater project. And if we have a vote supporting that expenditure, then I would reissue a letter that states that money if it would be appropriate commissioners with that specific amount. If we're good with what we've got so far, I.
I think they're moving ahead with the grant now.
It's submitted. It's been submitted and it's, you know, an important point for the state in terms of their next level connections grants. I think I shared with you the other counties that have taken a similar effort and I've talked with Charter and followed up with them and they feel very positive about that. And then I've talked to Don with regards to then the Sugar Creek area. Oh, yeah, thank you. So, so I've talked to Don in terms of a strategy for putting together addresses that we'll need to submit for the Sugar Creek air, you know, area in, in those townships. So Don had some good ideas and, and we're pursuing that as well as working with the Boone EDC on that work in Purdue. So I feel very positive about that. We'll continue to push it forward. I think that was one of the Lieutenant Governor's comments with her recent interview with Indiana PBS, the importance of that in our rural communities, particularly with telehealth and running a business like a farm and all the other aspects that need to be integrated into that. So it's kind of, and, and I don't know who said it, probably Councilman Kevin Van Horn is that it's, it's, it's just like electricity now, you know, in terms of getting those fiber optics out there in the high speed, particularly if you've got a family of six and, you know, you're running a business, you've got kids attending school and college and things like that. It, it really puts a demand on the bandwidth. So, yeah.
Do we know when we're going to hear back on this grant and whether or not Charter Communication receives it for us?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful with the grant process, it'll be within 50 days. So I'll continue to follow up on that. And then the big thing is, is the, the big challenge is getting people to submit their addresses. So we're going to put that back out and I'll contact Maria with Levin Reporter to specifically identify, here's the number you called to get on the list. And it, and it's important to do that because we don't want to miss anybody in that process.
So this is $250,000 to leverage $2 million.
Two and a half, yeah.
Two and a half to get broadband out to the underserved areas in our county.
Yeah, it was a number of, of areas in the county. And, and again, we, we, I got a, a recent memo from AT&amp;T who would also like to participate. So, and I think that EDC identified like 11 carriers that are serving our, our area. So it's exciting to get this finished.
Tom, those were the areas that you highlighted last month that you talked about. And then once those areas are completed, who decides where the next area is?
Well, we're going to be working with all 11 carriers who are submitting next level Well, we're going to be working with all 11 carriers who are submitting Next Level Grant applications. Charter is one of the leaders in that area. They've got the infrastructure in place to get a lot of this done. Boone REMC is putting fiber on some of their poles as well as Charter has permission with them to, you know, add aerial fiber. So it's, we're going to continue to push this effort as hard as we can, including identifying Boone County as a broadband-ready community, which will, again, accelerate, push some funding in to get this completed. Particularly with our growth. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thanks, Don, for your help.
How many people do you think they're going to cover? 5,000?
With which?
This charter. We're spending $250,000.
That covers 406.
Thousand?
406.
People.
Homes. Households. And it's not really 406 households, it's 406 passings. So if it goes past a multifamily group, that's one passing. So if it goes by an apartment complex, that's one passing. And so, excuse me. Yeah, so it's expensive. You know, you're putting fiber, miles of fiber out there, and it might take a mile of fiber to get to one location. So in this case, it's $2.5 million for 406 passings. But a passing could be a hospital, it could be a single family, it could be townhomes, so it varies, if you will.
Okay. What's the wording you want in the motion since we can't commit?
Didn't we vote on this last month?
She said she was going to vote. The specific dollar amount did not go on. So I think contingent upon the ARP funds coming in and that they'll go toward this once they receive the grant, right, or once we receive the grant, then that will initiate this, these funds being released.
Yeah, if we receive the grant, then we have to put the funding in.
So, you got the first motion?
We want the motion to say we will fund this contingent on the ARP monies coming in to $250,000.
Yes, all right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, super.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, next, Boone County Justice Commission update.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
At this point, we're waiting on the answers to the questions we submitted, and we're hopeful to discuss those next Tuesday.
We have an upcoming commission meeting the second. Monday is traditionally where it falls, but next Monday is Valentine's Day, so we're leaving the day after.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, next, salary amendment. Prosecutor Eastwood?
Good morning, Kent Eastwood, Boone County Prosecutor's Office. This salary amendment is, actually, it's a position, it's a new hire. We originally tried to scale this at $70,000. We ended up, we need to be 74 for the person that we hired. It's budget neutral, we're not asking to increase the budget, our budget will sustain this. Long story short, we'd actually hired someone back in mid-November to start January 1st. Then, oh, about mid to late December, that person called me up and said, sorry, I'm not going to take the job. There was another position prior to us that he had interviewed for with the state government, and about a week before he called me, they called back and said, hey, yeah, would you come work for us? And by the way, it's $20,000, pays $20,000 more than what I could pay. No brainer for the guy to take that. So we opened our process back up again, and basically our process came down to hiring a brand-new, no experience prosecutor, no experience attorney at the salary ordinance that was 70, or we can get an eight-year experience prosecutor coming in from a federal task force for 74. So from our standpoint, it was a no-brainer. So that's, so I'm just asking you guys to amend that salary ordinance, and again, it's budget neutral. Our budget will cover it this year, so.
Is it in one of the funds? Is this particular prosecutor?
No, it's a, no, it's just a regular.
It's in county, county general.
County general, yeah. So we were really hoping to hire a newer prosecutor, just, you know, we can get eight years federal, someone from the federal crimes, you know, federal gun task force, eight years experience versus a brand-new attorney with no experience that just passed the bar. It was a no-brainer.
Is this a siege gun?
Yeah.
It's really good. I moved him in the salary amendment to reflect that change, or salary ordinance, sorry. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And additional requests, commissioners?
All right, I'm going to try to say this correctly. Malia Rayland Jesse is here.
Oh, yay! Welcome to the world. Malia?
Malia.
Malia.
Yeah.
Beautiful.
So this additional is just about Kaylee's maternity leave. Should be gone here for a while, and we just wanted a little bit of padding in there just so we wouldn't have to go in the red on any lines for overtime if we need. Lori's been helping us out a lot, and if we needed to bring somebody in for, you know, a couple of weeks to help out with phones or whatever, we could do that. So that's all it's about.
I moved this room.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and with that, public comment. Well, we appreciate you all joining us this morning. Thank you very much for everything that each of you contributes to the goodness of our county. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Say again.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.
I was literally about to pull around and watch the lights, because I was, I saw you, I was like, you want to let me drive? And maybe you were, you were going, I couldn't do it.
Okay, I'll see if my signature's on it. Is mine, is that?
He passed out, so if you do mine, and then I got there, they had just got sugar and it's a fifty-five. So then if you.